Good evening and welcome to the Salmon Extension Virtual Town Hall Meeting Number Two. We're so glad that you could join us. My name is Susan Charzan and I am the Director of Communications and Public Affairs for the Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority. Tonight, we will be giving you a general overview of the Salmon Extension and answering some questions that came up in the first virtual town hall meeting. Again, this meeting is best viewed on a computer with sound. In fact, the sound for the video happened about halfway through it. If you have sound on your computer, you do not need to dial into the phone portion of the town hall. You should see the presentation in the middle of the screen. You can enlarge the screen by clicking on the maximize button icon to the right of the slide area, or by dragging the bottom right corner of the slide area. If your screen gets stuck or frozen at any time, please hit F5 or the refresh button on your internet browser. At the bottom of your Audience Council, or Multiple Application Widgets that you can use, a copy of today's slide deck is available in the Resource List widget, and that looks like a green folder at the bottom of your screen. If you have any questions during the webcast, you can click on the Q&amp;A widget at the bottom and submit your question. Your question cannot be seen by anybody else. If there are questions that are being asked by a number of people, we will push the question and answer out so that everyone can see. I would ask you to view and listen to the entire presentation before asking your question. The presentation will end at approximately 6:45, and we will stop taking questions at 7:00 PM. But the virtual town hall will stay open until all of the questions received have been answered. There are over 350 people watching and listening to this presentation, so please be patient if we don't get to your question right away. We capture all the questions before 7 o'clock and all of the answers. Those will be posted, along with the recording of tonight's webcast, on the Salmon Extension website. That's www.salmonextension.com. In addition to the recording, you can find the studies mentioned in this presentation, request a meeting or presentation, and ask further questions. You can also sign up for our monthly news update to keep up with the progress of the project. If you are joining us by phone and do not have access to a computer, tablet, or smartphone, and you have a question that you would like to ask, please call us and leave a voicemail. You also can request a copy of the presentation. The number to call is 813-272-6740, extension 296. Again, that number is 813-272-6740, extension 296. Once again, I would ask you to view and listen to the entire presentation before asking your questions. The presentation will end at 6:45, we'll stop taking questions at 7:00, but we'll stay open until all of the questions have been answered. So a brief history. What makes Gandy Boulevard special and what makes it challenging? Gandy Boulevard is special in transportation terms because as US Route 92, it's on the state's strategic intermodal system. The Strategic Intermodal System, called SIS, is Florida's network of transportation facilities deemed important to the state's economy and mobility. Roads on the SIS are the state's highest priority for capacity investments and are a primary focus for implementing the state's long-range transportation vision and policy plan. The SIS was established to efficiently serve the mobility needs of Florida's citizens, businesses, and visitors, and to help Florida become a worldwide economic leader by enhancing economic prosperity and competitiveness. Gandy Boulevard is challenging because it has four major issues that cause the traffic congestion. Gandy Boulevard has four closely spaced signalized intersections: West Shore, Manhattan, Loes, and Dale Mayberry. These intersections have a high degree of left turns, both from Gandy Boulevard to the north and south, and vice versa. Gandy Boulevard also has a large percentage of vehicles, we estimate 40%, that are regional, not intending to stop in the Gandy corridor, they are simply passing through. And finally, the traffic on Gandy Boulevard is not directional. In other words, just as many people live in Hillsborough County and work in Pinellas as the other way around. Currently, the intersections are set at a maximum green time for Gandy Boulevard. Adding more lanes to existing Gandy Boulevard and/or expanding the bridge will not improve the traffic conditions. To improve the congestion on Gandy Boulevard and the wait times at the signals, regional traffic, those drivers who have no destination in the Gandy corridor, need to have an alternative route. Throughout the years, many alternatives have been suggested. Planning studies were conducted as early as 1988 in Pinellas and 1990 in Hillsborough with the original Project Development and Environmental Study, called PDNE, initiated in 2000. In 2003, the Florida Department of Transportation studied four different alternatives for the traffic congestion on Gandy. All of these estimated costs include right-of-way acquisition, which is purchasing the homes and businesses, and the construction cost. We have updated the numbers to reflect $2,016. The first alternative route was along the existing and relocated CSX rail line to the south of Gandy Boulevard. This alternative went through the heart of the residential area and took approximately 176 homes and 18 commercial properties. The cost would be $474 million in $2,016, mostly because of right-of-way acquisitions. Currently, the right-of-way that was empty in 2009 now has homes on it. This means that in addition to taking more homes, this alternative's cost would be significantly higher. The second alternative proposed was a four-lane elevated structure on the north side of Gandy Boulevard. Although this alignment did not take any residential homes, in 2009, it would have taken 37 businesses. The structure, at 17 feet high and 90 feet wide, would have been an imposing structure. The cost would be $393 million in $2,016. The third alternative was to add lanes to Gandy Boulevard. The Florida Department of Transportation acknowledged that this alignment would not solve the problem, but would basically make the parking lot bigger. The cost for this would be $171 million in $2,016. FDOT also studied a tunnel. Some call it a cut-and-cover. This alternative was not carried farther because of the cost, $581 million in $2,016, and the significant disruption to Gandy Boulevard. The reason that the cost is so high is that you have to build temporary lanes for traffic during the construction, tear up Gandy Boulevard so you can put the tunnel underneath the existing lanes, and then put Gandy Boulevard back in place. This would have had a significant negative impact on the businesses along Gandy Boulevard and make commuting very difficult for at least three years of construction. In order to maintain traffic flow during constructions, you would have to encroach on business property, closing the businesses in some cases. These alternatives were seen as too costly, both in terms of money and lost property and business impacts. The Florida Department of Transportation did not continue with any of these alternatives. In 2010, the Florida Department of Transportation completed a beautification and safety project along Gandy Boulevard. The department removed a continuous center lane, which had unrestricted lefts and U-turns. In its place, the department built a landscaped median with channelized U-turns. By doing this, traffic on Gandy Boulevard moves safely and smoothly. However, the project did not increase capacity. In 2007, the city of Tampa asked the Florida Department of Transportation to look for options for Gandy Boulevard. At that time, the Florida Department of Transportation invited the Expressway Authority into the conversation. The Expressway Authority conducted its own planning, development, and environmental study to address current and future roadway needs in the Gandy Boulevard corridor, and we followed the state environmental impact report process. The preferred alternative from this process addressed current and local, I'm sorry, current and long-range transportation needs with minimum environmental impacts and no right-of-way The Board of the Expressway Authority and the Florida Department of Transportation approved the study in 2010 and 2011, respectively. But then, the recession hit. So the Expressway Authority did not pursue the project at that time. In 2016, the Expressway Authority initiated efforts to advance the preferred alternative to construction. The current project, the Salmon Extension, requires no right-of-way, no taking of businesses, and no taking of homes. The cost of this project, as well as the operation and maintenance of the facility, will be paid from toll revenue and toll bonds, not tax dollars. So let's talk about the specifics of the Salmon Extension project. The Salmon Extension is basically a ramp providing direct access to and from the Salmon Expressway and a queue jump between the Gandy Bridge and Dale Mayberry Highway. The extension goes from just east of the Gandy Bridge, about where the M is in Salmon Extension on your screen, to Dale Mayberry Highway and the Salmon Expressway. The people who will use the extension will be regional travelers. Getting these regional vehicles off Gandy Boulevard is the key. With less commuter traffic on Gandy, it will be easier to get to and from residential areas or to businesses along Gandy Boulevard. There have been many traffic studies over the 20-plus years that the Department of Transportation has been concerned about this corridor. These studies all use industry-standard modeling to count the number of vehicles at specific points on Gandy Boulevard and estimate the number of people that will use Gandy Boulevard in the future. In the traffic count completed in March of 2016, the average daily traffic on Gandy Boulevard was 47,175 vehicles. THIA estimates, the Expressway Authority estimates, that 40% of the vehicles on Gandy Boulevard are regional trips. That is, the driver has no intention of stopping on Gandy Boulevard and is just passing through. That regional traffic is THIA's target market for the Salmon Extension. The Salmon Extension preserves the choice for regional drivers. If a regional driver needs gas, wishes to get a bite to eat, or needs to stop at a business, they will still be able to use Gandy Boulevard, just as they do today. Again, getting the regional commuter traffic off of Gandy Boulevard but not bypassing Gandy Boulevard is the key to the Salmon Extension project. The traffic study I mentioned is available on the project website at salmonextension.com. Just a quick reminder, if you are not keeping up with the slides, refresh your screen. Press F5 or do the refresh button up in your browser. We're having lots of questions on that. So obviously, if a driver takes the extension, they will save time. But by pulling off those regional trips, drivers that choose to stay on Gandy Boulevard will also enjoy time savings at each light. Because remember, it's really those closely spaced intersections with their various turning movements that cause the delay on Gandy Boulevard. Less through traffic means more signal time for turning traffic. Our analysis with the extension in place shows a significant time savings for drivers on Gandy Boulevard. Signal wait times would be reduced by an average of 44%. As a result, customers driving to Gandy corridor businesses and homes benefit by reduced wait times on Gandy Boulevard. An economic study from the University of South Florida indicates that destination businesses would benefit from this improvement. The USF Economic Study is available on the Salmon Extension website. So now I'm going to show you basic ways to use the extension. If you are coming from Pinellas, you can choose to stay on Gandy Boulevard. Or you can choose to use the extension to go directly to the Salmon Expressway. Or you can choose the extension to get off and head north or south on Dale Mayberry, or continue east on Gandy Boulevard. If you're on the Salmon Extension, heading west towards Pinellas, you can get off on Gandy Boulevard, just like you do today, and head east or west, or simply stay on the extension and merge into Gandy Boulevard before the bridge. If you're on Dale Mayberry, you can head west on Gandy Boulevard, just like today. If you want to catch the extension and you are heading north on Dale Mayberry, say from McDill, simply go through the light at the Gandy intersection and take the ramp onto the extension. If you're heading south on Dale Mayberry, you would get on the extension before getting to the light at the Gandy intersection. Okay, I'm going to show this to you again, because I think it's really important to understand the movements that you can make with the Salmon Extension. So if you're coming from Pinellas, you can choose to stay on Gandy Boulevard and go to all the destinations there. Or you can choose the extension and go directly to the Salmon Expressway. Or you can choose the extension and get off and head north or south on Dale Mayberry, or continue east on Gandy Boulevard. If you are on the Salmon Expressway, heading west towards Pinellas... Oops, hang on. There, I'm sorry. If you are on the Salmon Expressway, heading west towards Pinellas, you can get off on Gandy Boulevard. Nope, it's not doing it the way I want it to. Okay. Or you can take the extension, we talked about this. Somehow my slides are missing up, so we'll just continue with that. And then if you're on Dale Mayberry Highway, you can go west like you do today, or if you want to catch the extension, you go through the intersection, loop around, get on the extension. Or if you're heading south, you simply take the ramp onto the extension. And these merge onto Gandy Boulevard just east of the bridge. At the east end of the extension, where the Salmon Expressway ends and begins today, there is an eastbound auxiliary lane between the exit and entrance ramps. And if you've driven it, you know that it's a crazy weaving merging traffic issue. This lane will be extended east to Dale Mayberry Boulevard, providing an exclusive southbound turn lane. This will reduce the weaving movement and improve safety. If this is a little hard to visualize, please go to our website and check out the preliminary graphic for the entrance and exits at this interchange. So a typical urban bridge is usually between 15 and 17 feet high. As you can see, a bridge at 15 feet visually cuts off one side of Gandy Boulevard from the other. This is not the Salmon Extension. The Salmon Extension is designed to be elevated to a height of 30 feet. That's 30 feet to the bottom of the box. Elevating the structure to 30 feet will help to visually decrease the mass of the bridge, allowing drivers to see businesses across Gandy Boulevard, as well as allow for light underneath the structure. At a height of 30 feet, the extension is about twice as high as a typical design bridge. In addition, ongoing engineering efforts have reduced the number of piers needed to support the structure by approximately 30%. Again, that helps you see the businesses across the corridor. On average, the piers will be about 200 feet apart. The Salmon Extension will be built in the existing median of Gandy Boulevard. The median turn lanes that exist today will exist when the project is completed. The landscaping will be put back, and we are working with the city of Tampa to see if there's an opportunity for public art in the corridor. In addition, we are also looking at minimizing spillover lighting from the extension and installing decorative lighting on the piers. Soon, we will be soliciting input from the public on the pier designs. That's why I want you to go to the website, salmonextension.com, and sign up for updates. You can help pick the pier design. This is what we call a typical section. This gives us a general idea of what the extension will look like. So let's start at the top. There will be one travel lane in each direction. Each travel lane is 15 feet wide. The lane will have six-foot shoulders on either side. The lane and the shoulders are to allow emergency vehicles access should an accident happen on the extension. The width gives the first responders the ability to move this disabled vehicle or accident to the side. That allows traffic to continue flowing, and most importantly, gives our first responders the room to do their jobs without worrying about their safety in traffic. Why is it only one lane in each direction, you ask? The Florida Department of Transportation has no plans in a 50-year horizon to replace or enlarge the Gandy Bridge. And because only 40% of the traffic is regional, one lane will effectively handle the present and future regional traffic. And the Salmon Extension lanes will be free of traffic signals, which means they can carry more vehicles. In this typical section, the Gandy Boulevard median is 34 feet wide, and the pier is in the center of that median. With this configuration, the extension overhangs the inside lane and a portion of the outside lane of Gandy Boulevard. Also, please note that the height is 30 feet to the bottom of the box. There's an additional 10 feet from the bottom of the box to the actual roadway of the extension. That means that the travel lanes of the extension will be 40 feet high. There are some places, such as near turn lanes, that don't have a 34-foot median. Here's a typical one, here's a typical section for one of those places. We call this an offset or C-pier. You can see that with the smaller median, in this case 24 feet, the extension will overhang the turn lane, the inside lane, and a little of the outside lane. Again, these are typical sections. During the process of design and construction, each pier location will be evaluated and a typical section for that pier developed. This is just to give you an idea of what the extension will look like. Now I want to go back to the first typical section for a moment, and talk about rain runoff. When it rains, the runoff will be piped down the center of the pier, and then into the existing underground outfall structures along the north side of Gandy Boulevard. It's buggered up. Let's try that again. There we go. So it will collect on the roadway, go down through the structure, and go out to the outfalls that are already there. This will help reduce the storm water on the existing Gandy Boulevard. All storm water permits are being obtained through SWIFTMUD. As part of the reevaluation of the Project Development and Environmental Study, the Expressway Authority has looked at noise impacts of the extension, not only for the Gandy Boulevard area, but also for communities around the Salmon Expressway. Preliminary results show that there will be an increase in vehicles on the Salmon Expressway that may warrant a noise barrier at one location. For the Gandy area, with the regional trucks and vehicular traffic not having to stop at the lights, there will be less braking and starting noise. And elevating the roadway to 40 feet allows the noise not to be trapped by buildings and other structures. This allows the noise to dissipate so that surrounding communities should not experience a significant difference from the traffic conditions that are present today. The updated noise study will be included in the reevaluation, which should be ready So for some reason, the slides are out of order. And being a good boy scout, we'll simply adapt to that. So I wanted to show you this slide because this shows you where the extension will begin and end. A lot of questions we had from the last virtual town hall thought that the lanes would actually go onto the bridge and people would have to merge onto the bridge. But the extension will begin and end right where that circle is, so you will be able to, if you're heading into town, you'll get in the left, into Tampa, you'll get in the left lane to get up on the extension. And if you're on the extension, heading to St. Pete, you will merge onto the left lane of traffic on Gandy Boulevard. All right, hopefully we're back on. In addition to the time-saving benefits, there's another huge benefit to this project, both for Hillsborough and Pinellas County residents. Gandy Boulevard is a hurricane evacuation route for 1.3 million Pinellas County and South Tampa families. With the Salmon West Extension in place, the total travel delays across all bridge-crossing decreases. Evacuation times improve for Tampa Bay overall, with some being as much as 60 minutes faster. Congestion and delays are reduced on Gandy Boulevard, and total traffic delay for Gandy Boulevard area residences reduces approximately 33%. In the case of an emergency, both lanes of the extension will be used for Pinellas eastbound traffic. That traffic will then go on the normally westbound lanes of the Salmon Expressway, leaving all of Gandy Boulevard and the eastbound lanes of the Salmon Expressway for South Tampa residents. But you didn't catch that, because that was too quick. So I'm going to show you. This is how the existing Salmon Expressway and Gandy Boulevard operate on a normal day. Two lanes eastbound, two lanes westbound. Typical day, typical Gandy Boulevard, Salmon Expressway, Salmon Expressway, Gandy Boulevard. Now let's add in the Salmon Extension on a normal day. One lane in each direction for the Salmon Extension. And there you have the typical day. During evacuation, we would contra-flow the lanes of the Salmon Extension, turning both lanes of the extension eastbound so that all of the Pinellas County traffic would be required to use the extension. In addition, the normally westbound lanes of the Salmon Expressway would be turned eastbound. So again, the normal configuration, you have Gandy Boulevard as it works today and the Salmon Extension as it works in the future. But in an emergency situation, we turn both lanes of the Salmon Extension eastbound, as well as the Salmon Expressway westbound lanes. The extension also helps South Tampa families. By separating the Pinellas traffic and getting it off of Gandy Boulevard, South Tampa residents will be able to use the extension. South Tampa residents would have all of Gandy Boulevard and the eastbound Selman Expressway lanes to use for evacuation. So I've talked about why the extension is needed, how it's going to work, the time saving, what it's going to look like, and the evacuation benefit. Now it's time to talk about how it's being funded and our construction timeline. The Tampa-Hillsborough Expressway Authority, THIA, is an agency of the state. It was created over 50 years ago by community leaders who were not content to wait in line for needed transportation projects to be funded. All the tolls that are collected on the Leroy-Selman Expressway are used in Hillsborough County. The cost for all phases of the Selman Extension project is estimated to be $180 million. That money will come from a combination of toll revenue and toll bonds. Tax dollars will not be used. And the THIA bonds are not state or local debt. As I mentioned before, there have been dozens of traffic studies throughout the years documenting the ever-increasing traffic on Gandy Boulevard. In fact, we completed one in March. But because we are selling bonds to help finance this project, we have to conduct an investment-grade traffic and revenue study. This study will provide additional trip forecast and trip origin and destination information to help us better define the number of users for the extension. In fact, many of you participated in the Origin and Destination Survey earlier this year, and we thank you. That study is expected to be complete in March of 2017. That study will also make recommendations on what the toll should be for the extension. As you know, the Selman Expressway does not have toll booths. We are an all-electronic tolling facility. You can either have a SunPass prepaid toll account, or we will take a picture of your license plate and mail a bill to the address that's listed on your vehicle registration. The extension will be told using this same technology, all-electronic tolling. On to construction. Let's face it, construction is painful. Our aim is to reduce impacts during constructions, impacts to businesses and impacts to travelers. So remember, the extension is being built in the median of Gandy Boulevard. Therefore, we anticipate closing only one driveway at the west end, and that closure would be completed in a couple of days. We do not anticipate closing any streets into the residential areas. THIA expects to keep two lanes of traffic open during morning and evening rush hours throughout the construction on Gandy Boulevard. Required lane closures will be during off-peak hours and at night. During construction, THIA expects the contractor to minimize median turn lane closures. Temporary closures of some median turning movements will occur during foundation construction. However, the closures, if required, would be for short durations and usually at night. Construction noise can obviously be anticipated, but will occur more at night than during the daylight hours. We anticipate using drilled shafts for the piers. What that means is that we won't be pounding the ground. During construction, vehicle delays may occur at nighttime when normal passenger and truck vehicular volumes are reduced. If you are a business on Gandy Boulevard, you were sent a survey. The results will help us coordinate construction activities for the least impact on businesses. If you did not take the survey, please go to the website, to the contact form, and ask to have the survey sent to you. Again, the website is selmanextension.com. Finally, worksite lighting will be required to construct this project, but will be limited to and directed at the worksite. For businesses, there will be weekly meetings with THIA, our contractor, and an onsite dedicated public information officer. This will allow businesses a forum to address construction issues. For commuters, there'll be weekly updates to ensure that timely and accurate construction information is distributed. All of the turning movements that are on Gandy Boulevard today will remain when the extension is completed. We will not be changing or eliminating any turn lanes on Gandy Boulevard. We are working closely with the South Tampa Chamber to help promote businesses before, during, and after construction. And we are also available for one-on-one meetings. So there are many items on this schedule, including a reevaluation of the project development and environmental documents that are due next month. We are proceeding with a conceptual design of the project, which includes pier location and ramp configurations for the Gandy-Dale Mayberry interchange. Have I said this before? If you're interested in these findings, please sign up for extension newsletter. We will let you know when we post the studies and plans, as well as keep you updated for the next virtual town hall. Again, there are many items on this list, but I guess the two most important are when are you going to start and when are you going to finish? While we are continuously working on the project, you have probably seen the drill rigs out there getting soil samples. There won't be too much to see on Gandy Boulevard until winter next year. Our goal is to be completed by the spring of 2020. It's an aggressive schedule, but one that we believe we can meet. So I can't say this enough. Go to the website, have a look around, sign up for updates, ask questions. You can also request meetings and presentations with THIA staff. We are always looking for helpful input on the project. THIA staff are available for meetings with groups and individuals to share ideas and answer questions. We have more virtual town hall meetings planned for this year. Please check out the website and sign up for the newsletter so that you can join us. This concludes the Selman Extension Virtual Town Hall Number Two. Thank you for attending. We will continue to have the question-and-answer session live until 7:00 PM. At 7:00 PM, you will not be able to ask any more questions, but we will continue answering all of the questions received before 7:00. I want to remind you that you can view the webinar on the Selman Extension website, and I encourage you to share it with family and friends. I'll be back to let you know when we will be closing down the website. And again, thank you for attending.